Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Spencerport Central School District Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, March 28. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge to the flag?
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Any questions, comments? Okay, all favor. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to you, this one, for your athletes.
Yeah, so this is one of the most enjoyable parts of our board meeting, and that's our opportunity to celebrate students. So the same thing, Ms. Lutinsky is in the crowd, and we are going to be recognizing student athletes from indoor track, swimming, wrestling. Susan, I welcome you to come up to the podium, and we're looking forward to hearing about our students.
Great. Thank you. I would like to just thank the board again for the opportunity to recognize the accomplishments of our winter season athletes. Susan, you've had a great winter. And in addition to all of the great things you're going to hear when our coaches come up and share about our athletes, I would also like to share that the bowling teams all also received the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Scholar Athlete Recognition for the winter, boys and girls basketball, ice hockey, boys and girls bowling, boys swimming and dive, cheer, and boys and girls indoor track. This is not only a reflection of the hard work and dedication of our student athletes, but also a testament to the hard work and support from our entire learning community, including our teachers, administrators, support staff, and all involved. And we truly appreciate all of the support from our Board of Education. Tonight, we're going to recognize members from our boys and girls bowling team, sectional champion qualifiers from wrestling, indoor track, and boys swim team. I'm incredibly honored to share their accomplishments with you. And to start, we're going to kick it off with wrestling. So I would like to welcome Coach Gray. And tonight, we are going to hear about the accomplishments of senior Cal Russo, Jackson Burns, and sophomore Ryan Zalinski. Congratulations on an incredible season, and I will hand it over to Coach Gray.
First of all, I'd like to thank the board for this time. Sorry. Right over here so we can see you. Sorry, guys, we'll get there. First of all, I'd like to thank the board and Mrs. Lutinsky for this opportunity to honor these five men. Tonight, I'd like to recognize three distinguished Spencerport wrestlers who demonstrated team pride, dedication, toughness, and honor. Sophomore in the center, Ryan Zalinski at 110 pounds. 215 pounds. All representing Spencerport Central School District in this year's New York State Wrestling Championships in Albany. These three student athletes are recognized as one of the best wrestlers amongst their respective weight classes. Our first athlete to be recognized and her 10 pounder, Ryan Zalinski. Ryan placed second at the Monroe County Tournament this year, second at her own Teiki Vertabey Wrestling Tournament, first at the Lockport Tournament in Buffalo, New York, first in the Medina Tournament, was also recognized as lightweight most outstanding wrestler. He placed first in the Class A II Tournament, second at our state qualifier, which allowed him to go to states. And he will be receiving All-New York State Honored by placing eighth in the New York State Tournament. What is also needed to be recognized is Ryan is a 2023 All-Greader Rochester Selection, a 2023 All-Monroe County Team Selection. But most importantly, Ryan was selected by Monroe County to receive and be the recipient of the Monroe County Sportsmanship Award. Congratulations. My left is Cal Russo, our 138 pounder senior. Cal is going to go down as one of the best wrestlers to ever wear the singlet here in Spencerport. His career record at the end of his, at the end of the tournament was 137, 137 wins and 27 losses. His awards are almost monumental. He is a four-time Class A champ, a three-time Super Sectional champ, a three-time Section 5 New York State representative, including many numerous awards that I could be up here and just continue to speak upon. Cal will be recognized as an All-State Honor as well for placing seventh at the New York State Wrestling Tournament. Cal is also a 2023 All-Greader Rochester Selection and also All-Monroe County, All-Monroe County Team. Congratulations, Cal. The wrestler to the right, Jackson Burns. Jackson wrestled 215 pounds for us this year. He was our highest place finisher, placing fourth at the New York State Championship. I can't speak enough about Jackson's determination, focus this year. He deserved every place finishing that he received, including that fourth place. Jackson was the second place at the Monroe County Tournament this year, first place at the Lockport Tournament this year, first place at the Medina Tournament this year. And for those who know wrestling, Jackson was the true second at our Supers Tournament, which means after the finals, he had to wrestle with the third place finisher within 45 minutes after coming off the podium to be deemed the second place. And then he had to win that second place match to be able to go on to states. And if he did that, he would have not went on to states. And he showed grit, toughness, mental focus. I'm very proud of Jackson Burns. Here in All-State Honors, placing fourth at this year's New York State Tournament. Jackson is a 2023 All-Greader Rochester Selection and All-Monroe County Team as well. To the board, I say in closing, I would like to congratulate Cal, Ryan, and Jackson on your achievements. Your coaches, teammates, program, and school district recognizes and applauds your hard work, dedication, and achievement. Congratulations, you three.
Thank you all for coming, or athletes for showing up tonight as well. Next, I'm going to share Boys and Girls Bowling. So I'm going to have my friends Carter, Manny, and Josh come up on behalf of the bowling team. Unfortunately, Coach Pataro and Coach Lovett are not able to be here tonight because they're up on the lacrosse field coaching the home opener for boys lacrosse. So I'm excited to share the accomplishments of both our Boys and Girls Bowling Team. There we have it. So this year, both our Boys and Girls Bowling Team were Monroe County Division Champions. In addition to that, our Boys team had broke the school record for a series high score throughout the season. Josh Winter bowled the series tie this year at the Sectionals Tournament. He and Jesse DeColle were named All-Tournament Team in Sectionals. We also had nine student athletes from our Boys and Girls Team that were named All-County Honors. And I'm going to ask Captain Josh Winter to say a few words on this.
Thank you, Ms. Waseo, Burr, and the board for having us this evening. It was a fantastic season. I really feel like our team was connected. We trusted each other. We had a fantastic connection. We've all been friends for years, and that really showed. Throughout the year, we stayed close. We went to every single match, believing that we could take every single point. We never felt overmatched. And we had a fantastic season. We only lost, I believe, it was six points all season, took home the division title, and continued that through Sectionals. Maybe we didn't have the best result, but I still had a blast every single day bowling with my friends, and I looked forward to it no matter what, no matter what the day before had for sure, and no matter what the next day entailed. It was just a fantastic season. I wouldn't have it any other way. So, thank you.
Thanks. Moms, thank you.
I would like to welcome up Coach Maresco, our Boys and Girls Indoor Track Coach, to share the accomplishments of Toby and today this year in our indoor track season.
Maybe. Stand up here. I will start with Toby. Toby is a junior, and he is a second-time athlete who attended the state meet. He comes with great athletes. Obviously, if he makes the state meet, he's done some really, really hard work. But what I'd really like to highlight about Toby and his indoor season is that he had two really big things he went through. He had his, what shall I say? He, I forgot what it was. He had such a great base in his running. He just had to take that to another level. But I think what really did it for him partially is his leadership. He was very vested in his team, not just himself. He wanted to bring everybody along with him, and that really showed day-to-day in his practice. And he became very vested in his academics, whether he wanted to or not. He is a high achiever. Please don't take that in any other way. He also is very vested in his school community because he's involved in jazz, music, and all to the highest extent that he possibly can be. His leadership and his grit really gets him to where he's going to be, and he is going to carry on with that leadership throughout summer. He is going to be a great person in this community once he graduates. But as an athlete and young man, he's doing his best. And I congratulate Toby Dixon. This is a senior, and this was her first trip to the state meet. She had quite a season. She has done indoor for a few years. She actually dabbled a little in cross country, was not her favorite. And I'm sharing it is because this girl tries anything and does it like she owns it. Whether, where she pans out, the way she attacks everything is she expects to be up here. And again, this is probably what makes her a phenomenal athlete, but also a stellar athlete. She's been voted Scholar Athlete since past two or three seasons. So that gives you a little insight. She's also part of DECA. She's also on the ROV隊伍. All at the highest level of what she can do. She started her indoor season saying, "Coach, I want to do this. I want to do that." And kind of really said, "No, we need you to do what you're really good at." She wasn't really happy with that, but she channeled everything into it. And she is, you know, did well at counties. She was first female county. She did well at Sectionals, but then she won the state qualifier championship. And she truly shows that anything can happen, and hard work pays off. So we're really super proud of Penny, and she's a senior. And we look forward to seeing what she's going to do in the future. Again, these are two great leaders that are really giving back in every way they ask for it. So thank you both tremendously, Jeff.
All right, and last but certainly not least, I'm going to have Coach Burr come up and share the no doubt impressive accomplishments of Camden Key. So I don't think he'd be here with us tonight, but Coach is going to share his accolades, some of the last from our Boys team.
Sorry, I've got to get the right paper so I can do this. Good to see all of you again, and thank you for inviting us here. Camden Key's been here today, but he had a phenomenal season campaign as our swimmer of the year. So I'll just go over a few of his accomplishments. They're all from this year. He was selected as the Democrat and Chronicle All-Greader Rochester Recognition, and also was recognized and voted in as Monroe County Division Two Swimmer of the Year. And that's selected by all the varsity head coaches within Section 5. Beginning in January, Camden started breaking records left and right. It started with breaking a pool record up at Hilton, where he set the record there in the 100 butterfly. And a couple of weeks later, he set a pool record in Gates Chai Line, the 200-yard netting. In addition to those pool records at other locations, Cam achieved a Spencerport record of six New York State qualifying cut times and broke four Spencerport school records. And I have to kind of qualify what that means about breaking four individual school records because the high school format for swimming contains 12 events. Three are relay events, and one is diving. So that really leaves eight individual events. Camden broke the school record in four of those. So he holds the school record now in half of the individual events in swimming. I never asked him to dive this year, but who knows what might have happened if I had. But I think it's important to recognize too that two of the records that he broke were over 30 years old. They've been on the record board since 1991. So to close out his season, he participated in New York State High School Swimming Championships. He placed 15th in the 200-yard freestyle. And in his favorite event, the 100-yard butterfly, he placed third. So he had a great year. He also does very well academically. He has a 96.3 grade point average. He will be studying mechanical engineering once he makes a decision about where he wants to go to school because I think he's now considering, yes, he has additional options after the kind of year that he's had. So I think, you know, when you look at what he's accomplished this year, that Cam is probably the most accomplished swimmer who has ever represented Spencerport Rangers. So we're really very proud of him. And thank you for celebrating his accomplishments with us.
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, and congrats on a phenomenal winter season, seniors. We wish you all the best, and hopefully we'll see some of you back here in the spring. But thank you again for taking the time to recognize their incredible accomplishments.
Thanks, Jeff. We'll go ahead and continue on with the next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Not sure if we have any students here. Purpose. Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus 5.28. 5.28, which will be available for future meetings.
Take a second. Kate, all favor? Five oh. Okay, Board of Education reports. I really don't have a whole lot to pass on right now. I'm going to be doing one of the Act for Education video vignettes about board service for this year to go around. Help people that are considering running for board or already there and stuff. So I'm going to be doing that this week. Other than that, I really don't have a lot more to pass on.
Last week, I participated in an Act for Education webcast. It was a panel for Monroe County Board members. And I was one of the panelists. Similar goal, that's what you mentioned, to get information out for people who are considering running for a board position. So I think it's airing this Thursday at noon. So the chat will be live, but the webcast itself was pre-recorded. And last week, I attended the All-District Fan Concert, which was awesome. That was really a great experience. Super impressive.
Um, Nia and I, along with Jonathan and some of our administrators, are throwing up to me to talk about code of conduct changes for this coming year.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Since Dave's on Air Safety Committee met today, no major updates to share. We're going to have an update in probably a month or two regarding a study that's done by people at Student Bradford about cellphone usage and see how that applies to us in Spencerport. There is a draft about instructional doors in relation to our fire code. That will be going out soon.
That big comes up, okay. I do have one other thing to pass. I failed to remember. We're going to kind of join with our STA colleagues in their annual food drive. So we'll get a little bit more information to everybody, and there'll be one of our upcoming board meetings where you can bring your stuff, and they will take it off our hands. Yeah, do that thing. And with that, thanks to Cal. Oh, yeah, that's right.
I had a question about the calendar dates for next year. It seems like we alternate between six and seven. Is that intentional or different than what we do?
The seven o'clock, at least, as far as, there are ones where we have budget focus group. I have it just to keep those same things, those things on the same night.
Okay.
The six o'clock is what we liked as our starting time, you know.
So budget focus group, we need some September and October? Or are there other things that, this is September, October, the reception?
Reception, yeah.
October will be a little more of a thing, she says. Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, so in a perfect way, we meet at six o'clock all the time, but there's some other impact.
Not a perfect thing.
That is for sure. Any other concerns or questions about it? Right, so. Isn't that on the agenda? All right, all right.
Before we move into the agenda, I just wanted to share a bright spot that we had our middle school dance over the past weekend and had roughly 307th and 8th grade students attend that dance. And just like 13- and 14-year-olds, they were having a great time and dancing. But really, kudos to the staff members who coordinate that and supervise that and allow for that to happen. If you remember, that was a goal of the middle school to just continue to build connection within that building. There's lots of happy kids and great behavior as well.
Right. I love a dance.
I said that I didn't have a report, but I have to say, the people that, the adults that took control of that are like, they all have wings at this point. Those kids were so happy, literally. And my daughter came home and said it was like the first time she felt normal, even after everything that we've been through because they have not had a middle school dance since. Like, she doesn't know, she didn't know what a middle school dance was. And I think we had one every year I was in, or two a year when I was in middle school. So it was like amazing, all the work that the teachers and administrators and everybody put into it was incredible. It was worth every little bit of work that they did. It was amazing. I know. We should have a dance for the board.
A dance for the board? So moving, thank you, though. I just wanted to show you the real bright spot. So moving into our agenda. We have the opportunity, Adam, I'm in front of you in regards to tenure candidates, or, excuse me, teacher candidates for tenure. We've had the opportunity to have a conversation and really share the wonderful successes of our teacher colleagues. So we're looking for approval and recognition of those tenure.
Yeah, first off, just before we do that, I want to thank you all for doing that constant review with us so that we know exactly what we're running on. So without any other questions or comments, do I have a motion to approve? Megan's second. Kate, all favor? Five oh.
So moving forward, we're going, I'm going to invite Rick to the podium, and we're going to move into our fundraising presentation. And so just to give context to this presentation, we really started our conversations as we started learning about extra class clubs and activities and questions about fundraising arrived. And we wanted to address those questions. Unlike some of our other presentations where the board has given us questions and we sort of have a presentation of the answers, what we're really trying to do in this presentation is ground ourselves in policy, address some of the practices that are occurring. But also, I want to remind the board that we are going to be doing an audit of our fundraising, excuse me, practices. So this is an opportunity to just kick off that work. And if there are any questions or thoughts that you want to add as we move into the audit, this would be a great opportunity to have those conversations.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristen. So probably not one of my favorite topics as I was preparing for this. So again, what I did find out as I was prepping for this, and there was a lot of prep, a lot of discussion with Kristen, with Brian Jane as well, that there was very little of this, I oversee a very little piece of the public here. So I think one of the things that I found out is it'll be interesting to see how we move forward, and who is responsible to some degree, which I think is part of what some of the questions that you were raising were. So, but again, just to get us back to this particular topic, these were some of the questions that we received over the last year or so. So a number of fundraisers, how do we watch the saturation? How are the needs identified? So some of these will be addressed indirectly, some won't. But I did want to, again, just share with you, just to ground what we're talking about. These were some of the examples that were provided to me. And again, something that I remember is that, you know, my kids have been graduated for a while. Okay, I'm not in the buildings all the time. I'm not very familiar with the things that are going on as far as fundraising. But again, a lot of what I'm seeing is on social media. A lot was, that was shared with me on social media. So, you know, varsity cheerleader looking at Super Bowl squares. More Super Bowl squares for the swim team. Same thing. Here's an extra class activity. Again, a little bit more defined, you know. Again, one of the things I think we begin to look at is, you'll see at some degree in policy, what needs to be identified? Who is the participating group? You know, this is very clear. It's a class of 2024. No, it's not. There is, what is the fundraiser, right? Again, these are just some of, again, shared by you with me. Again, not very familiar with a lot of what the Music Association does. So this came across my desk. And then lastly, as we get into this, this was something that, again, that I consider other or outside of the district as it relates to this Spencerport Education Foundation. So I actually went through and did a search in the policy manual of the term fundraiser. These are the policies that came up that were relevant to this. So the first one is under the 3271 Solicitation of Charitable Donations. Just trying to highlight some of the key aspects is that the direct solicitation of donations from district students and school property is prohibited. But then they go on to say, however, and then throw two examples out of, you know, what would qualify. And then I thought, this was probably the most interesting. The board will ultimately decide which organizations, etc., can solicit charitable donations and for what purposes. And then I thought this was probably the most interesting, was the board will ultimately decide which organizations do, et cetera, can solicit charitable donations and for what purposes. So I'd be interested to hear what you guys think that means. First off, we need to know how many organizations are out there doing this. We can't start with even thinking about whether we're getting a name or something without knowing in some way, I don't know, at the beginning of the year or. At the end of the year for next year, having that understanding, that clarity is conclusive what.
Yeah, I've pointed out a couple of different times that neighboring districts have sort of like an application that at the beginning of the year. You have to register with the district saying that you'd like to go to do fundraisers throughout the year. And then for each fundraiser, there's a, just a small sheet saying what the fundraiser is and where the funds are going. So that some tally can be kept as to who's conducting fundraisers and what the money is going to be used.
So we've obviously not, right. Well, that's helpful for me, because as I was looking at this, it's like, okay, I've had, I had conversations with Jonathan, what does it mean to you? A conversation with Kristen this morning, but then she asked me, I don't know what it means. So um. And again, what I want to point out is this particular policy is under community, uh, community relations under the three thousand series. There's only one that really falls under the non-instructional business operations, and that has to do with wellness, which I thought was interesting. So this is really Jamie's realm, uh, I'm not going to ask her to address. But again, some of the higher, you know, the, the key points is that, um, you know, you really have to be in a line with the Healthy Hundred Free Kids Act. They won't be sold until after the lunch period, so they're not in competition with the national school lunch program. Uh, if you do it outside of the school, you're still encouraged to, again, meet that Healthy Hundred Free Act. And again, it must be approved by the appropriate building principal or designated. Now you get into the seven thousand series. And what I found interesting is um really fundraising under sports, under booster club, I should say. Really had to do more with Title IX, and I know Leah, you had addressed that uh in email earlier. Um, so again, ensuring that the boys and girls programs are provided with equivalent um benefits. Um, and obtained through private funds, including fundraising and booster clubs. So again, this to me, there's a little bit higher level focus at this, uh, that was not in prior policies specifically under that. Uh, so again, I think that's probably something that we will have to, uh, you know, give a little bit more due diligence to make sure that we're in line with that.
So then bottom, must be approved by, we have, is there some process that's in place for the last? All schools sponsored must be approved by the appropriate building principal. Is that happening and what are the processes for that within each building? Are they, do they have fundraising activity for wellness?
Not for the wellness committee.
Because that's what this is specific to.
This is just about wellness.
Specific to that.
Well, it's not specific to the wellness committee, it's specific to wellness at school. I also think that the phrase school-sponsored fundraiser, I don't think the school itself ever has a fundraiser where they're selling food items. It would be a club or a sport, so that's.
I, that's where it starts to get a little tricky, because we do have class-sponsored fundraisers. Sure. That involve food, candy sales specifically. So I, I'm, I'm just saying, that's where it starts to get, when you talk about school-sponsored, is it? What does that mean?
With that?
Extra class, is it, right? Is it just, I don't think that was candy sales.
Well, again, conducted outside of the school.
Yes.
You're encouraged to support, doesn't mean you have.
Encouraged, yeah, right, we had this, I think we actually did have a conversation on this.
I think that definition of school sponsor, what does that mean? Is that, is a class of twenty twenty four or a school's?
It's rhetorical, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so there's another kind of little hole in there. All right, thanks.
Okay, we, we touched on this. Um, the other student policies related to fundraising by students. And again, a lot here because I don't want to take it in isolation. I don't want to just highlight one particular aspect without really seeing uh the total impact of that. But again, fundraising projects may be sponsored by school organizations who express approval of the building principal. You'll see when we get into the process of how I've broken out uh the different organizations who do that. Any questions as it relates to that or anything you think we need to add a bit further?
I'm good, I don't expect anybody to know the answer, but I'm just throwing it out there. So a lot of the senior projects involve students fundraising for one thing or another. For whatever their senior project is based in. So that would be fun, you know what I'm saying? That's a direct link to our education program, the student fundraising. It is a project outside, but it is a requirement, so.
So hopefully, Martha's taking a break now, so we'll go back. So again, what I try to do is to share, try to share with you um sort of process and practice, okay? I highlighted extracurricular clubs and activities because that is really the area of that. The business office oversees. We have a specific audit for clubs and activities, okay? You'll see later on that the procedures that we have in place are sort of our locus of control. You're going to find the boosters, and again, I define that as sports booster and music association. We talked about parent organizations and then those other uh organizations. And the first one that came to my mind was the Spencer Education Foundation. So again, for extracurricular, I'm going to uh go through these pretty quickly, you should probably be more familiar with it. There is a fundraising calendar. Once approved, um, you know, they're entered in that calendar so that they can get a sense of first, um, what's out there. We try to do on a first come, first served basis. I will share that Andy um Vasito, our central treasurer, does a phenomenal job of working with the club advisors. Um, working with the clubs and he's maintaining this uh aside from the calendar, but he's maintaining uh that information as well.
So if anytime Andy would know what kind of club fundraisers are going on, this is.
Assuming there, I mean, technically speaking, this is the process that should happen.
Okay.
Each club should complete what they call a Form A, which is a fundraising request, okay? And all of this is um shared with the club advisors at the start of each school year, okay? That particular form requires the club advisor, assistant principal, and the principal signature. So again, from an I, uh, a process standpoint, the building level administrator should be familiar with the fundraisers that are going on, okay? All of that information is provided to the central treasurer. There's a checklist that uh the clubs, along with the club advisors, should use. And then upon the completion of the fundraiser, they submit Form B, which requires the club advisor and student uh treasurer. And that really takes into account, you know, how close did you come to what you would estimate, is there a profit or a loss? Okay, so again, a very thorough process when it comes to extracurricular clubs and activities.
But there's no limit. It's first come, first served, but there's no limit on a day or amount of fundraisers within a month.
Correct.
And if you, um, if you were to, I want to say yes, but do, do you feel that this process is currently being called? Or is that something that we will look at when we're doing the audit of the?
I think when we, and I'm going to, I'm going to call it more of a review versus an audit.
Okay.
Okay, I think audit is going to scare a lot of people.
We can call it a review.
That will definitely be part of, I think, what that review will do.
Okay.
So before I move on, any additional questions or comments on extracurricular? So booster clubs, again, I broke it down into two. Um, you have the sports booster club. Now, they, again, their main revenue source is really coming from concessions, okay? And the sports camps. You know, they do a food truck earlier, that to me would be more of a fundraising activity, but I don't necessarily consider concessions and these sports camps necessarily a fundraiser, okay? Now.
Why, why would you consider a sport camp a fundraiser?
Um, because I don't see them coming out and, you know, if you want to participate, participate. It's something that the athletes would want to go to. I just don't see it as a, a standard fundraiser.
Well, they run the sports camps for the younger students and they charge a tuition in order to attend those KNOTs.
It's just my.
So, okay.
I mean, obviously, you feel differently, which is fine, I, I just don't.
Well, where do you think the funds are, are the funds just going to staff the camps? Is that what happens? Or they're not actually generating any funds for?
No, they're, well, they're going to um. They're going to pay the coaches and then whatever they have left over is going to go into the main revenue source of booster club itself.
Okay.
And ultimately to, again, reinvest in the sports programs.
Hey, look, separate, I'm sorry, can I ask a question? Go ahead. Um, when we talk about Spencerport Sports Booster Club, that's a Spencerport Sports Booster Club. Then every team, right, has, can have a booster club outside of that? So baseball, wrestling, correct?
So that's where we're getting to, yeah. So each parent group, so each sport, okay, is they have a parent rep that attends the monthly meetings of the booster club. Okay.
I, I do that? Is, I mean, is that, that's.
I don't, I don't attend.
I know, I, I know, so I'm just, I'm asking you, I guess.
I, I mean.
I didn't know, is that, is that how it's supposed to work? There's a Spencerport Booster Club and then.
The structure.
The structure is each individual team then has a, can have a booster club that then reports into the Spencerports. Am I right?
Yeah.
That's all I was trying to get at. I didn't know if it was people operating separately from that structure. This thing, I assumed it was people operating separately, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I follow.
So I, you know, I went to a meeting last week for a sports sport. And we're giving a handout about a fundraiser, but there's no mention of it tying into any official booster club. Either for the team or for the overall Spencerport Booster Club. The word booster was not part of the conversation.
But, so again, I think that's part of what I think we're going to find out in part of the review, because I think that was one of the things that Leah was saying.
And that's all.
And that's what I was trying to show before is.
Yeah.
Who's doing the boost, who's doing that, okay? What, what's it for, the, the purpose of all that? Um, but from my, at least my research on this, is that each sport is supposed to have a parent rep that attends meetings, okay? They in turn share, hey, we think we're, we're going to do a, a fundraiser for such and such, okay? Now, I know that right now, um, our athletic director Jen and Christina Bowden are working with the sports booster club. To put a better process in place to sort of manage and identify the number of um fundraisers that each team is sharing out, okay? Prior to that, I, you know, especially during the COVID, that, I'm not sure how much of a record, but again. They're, you know, they're a separate organization, okay, that I don't oversee. And then, so why do they do that? Because one of the questions that was asked was, okay, do they have to fundraise in order to, you know, play the sport, okay? And the answer is no. The things that they're doing, they're fundraising for, is the senior banquet. Okay, the individual uh banners, okay, senior gifts, it's those types of things that are above and beyond, okay? Now we get to the third bullet point of reinvesting in sports, the, the sports programs. So what happens there is. Our athletic director reaches out to our, all of our coaches, okay? And for lack of a better term, it's sort of a, sort of like a wish list, okay? She compares what is in her budget and what she plans the budget for versus some of the other items that coaches may want. Or feel they need, okay? Not necessarily to run the program, but just would enhance program, okay? She does that double check, she goes back and forth with the coaches as needed, and then from there, that lists those to the booster club. But after that, I don't know for sure. They, maybe they have a subcommittee, they determine how to distribute those funds.
When those funds are distributed, whether it's an in-kind gift, for example, whether the booster club purchases the item and donates it to the school. Or if they just make a cash donation, do we get any record of, you know, sports? I, you provide us with memos from time to time saying, I recommend that the board accepts the donation of tops. Or would we expect to see a memo like that saying, I recommend that the board accept the donation from the booster club?
I think in a general sense, if they're making that donation, then yes, we probably should.
Okay.
Which is not currently happening.
Okay, and I'll just earmark here that um as part of the policy review process, there was a policy that was deleted that I think would be helpful to consider putting back in place.
Yes.
I forget the number of them.
Thirty two sixty.
Thank you.
So again, that's sort of my level of what I've researched as it relates to the sports booster. Now, again, um, I'm not that familiar with music association. I think we have some board members that may be able to help in that regard, but they are located on the website under the high school. Whereas the, the sports booster is under athletics. This, they do identify the purpose of, of their, you know, what they're, they're trying to do. So again, I think the same applies to the sports booster. So again, I'm not familiar of what the music association has or has not donated to the program. Um, and we should try to be consistent with both. Okay, I did reach out to, I, I sent an email, but granted, it was late Friday, um, so.
Oh, to the SMA?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, by the way, the SMA is um, it's a not-for-profit, it's registered. Um, they do fundraisers throughout the year and they try to support a end-of-the-year banquet for our senior high school students. And they also try to purchase a small senior gift for each of our musicians who stay with the program through their senior year. So we leave them with a, a small party, party gift at the end of the year. So I don't think we ever get to the point where we have enough funds to reinvest in the music program and make a donation back to the school, but maybe someday we'll get there.
There we go. Okay, parent organizations and other. Again, I reached out to um building principals, elementary in particular. You've got parent organizations, I'm sure you were probably members of those. Again, just procedurally, it's the officers of those parent organizations that bring those fundraising ideas um forward. They vote on them by, you know, the membership of the, the parent organization. Um, and talking with the building principals, they are not voting members. It's really the ideas of the uh parent organizations. They identify some common fundraising uh fundraisers that they've done. They do some things where they actually do sales, like family, for family events. They do sometimes the book fairs, um, and then they do other uh things as far as, you know, part of the box tops you can buy for, for an elementary school. And if they have to use the facility for a particular fundraiser, they would have to go. As it would be with um music association boosters, they have to fill out a facility resource. So many times that is one of the ways that we're identifying that there's actually a fundraiser going on at times. Uh, and then under the other, again, just shared, uh, Spencerport Education Foundation, very similar to the parent organizations, they're generating at those monthly meetings. Fundraising ideas to help um, you know, contribute to um, you know, the district. Um, and then they, you know, advertise on their website for the mouth flyers, et cetera. And you saw an example of one of those for tonight. So here's the, the review. This is the scope, they're going to review the policies and regulations for tenured fundraising activities. And to try to compile a list of all the booster organizations. And now they're saying booster, the picture, um, we're including the PT, the parent organizations. A letter just went out um to the Spencerport Education Foundation, Spencerport Music Association, Spencerport Sports Boosters, and each parent organization. Um, sharing with them that, you know, that be alarmed if you, you know, get a call from our internal auditor um to begin collecting data. And you can see for yourself the types of items that we're hoping this audit, or this review, or whatever, um, will produce. This is not a, a normal review, internal control. So this will be a really interesting uh process. Uh, we anticipated completion of that was June of twenty twenty three, just based on the schedule and. That's all I had is really just a general information uh session for you. Hopefully they clarified it, and they not have, but that's where we're at.
No, I think it's, it's helpful, I thought it was helpful. No, I think it's, it's helpful, I thought it was helpful just for me to have it understanding that you also see the, the number of fundraisers that are out there and how confusing it's starting to get. And, um, raising questions for me are just like, um, I've seen so many fundraisers that you start thinking, gosh, are we drastically underfunding some portion of these programs that's requiring all these various fundraisers to be helped? Um, and so I guess those will be questions that'll be interesting to, to see and, and learn more about in terms of where these funds are going and how much is being generated and whether or not there's a funding deficiency somewhere along the line.
And again, right, you know, because that was one of the, you know, in communications that, that I've had with, with board members on this, that was in the back of my mind as I was doing the research. Um, and, you know, a lot of it, um, I feel a little bit better that it's, it's not that what we have in our budget is sufficient for our sports programs to run, for music to, to, to be successful. Um, so, you know.
Yeah, I think that's a really major point, though, when we look at it, because I think that was part of my concern too, was that what is required of people in order to participate, Republic School? Um, we certainly would want kids to be able to participate equally. And sometimes if we are requiring fundraising in order for that program to exist in and of itself, then that creates a problem. But if they're able to exist without it, right, we've provided what they need to have a team.
Which is what you're saying.
Which is what you're saying.
I believe that. And trust me, if, if it weren't, we'd hear about it.
Mm-hmm, you know, I am, and my other side of it is I fully, listen, nobody wants to interfere with people's, um, with booster fundraising or otherwise. I do think that when there isn't clarification of who the fundraiser is by, it puts the district in a uncomfortable position, because we are gonna go out with the budgets. Um, people are gonna be seeing increases, and I know from my own, the number of fundraisers I receive weekly, um, you start to think like, well, I'm paying for this and I'm paying for that, I need twenty dollars here and twenty dollars there and twenty dollars there, and now I'm seeing a tax levy. Um, and it starts to be, you have to start to kind of separate what is needed versus what isn't. And then there's a really hard conversation there, right, about how much of that are we doing is necessary for students? Um, versus a lot of extra that then could impact the actual programming that we need to get done here and budgets that we need to pass. I think it gets really, um, if there isn't a clarity of who it is, and I think that's the part that's hard for me, is when I get a fundraiser, I don't know, is it a booster? Is it a, is it a, is it a, does anybody even know it's existing? Is it separate? Is it something they have to do? Is it not? You know, even just a disclaimer, who, who the fundraiser is being hosted by would be helpful. Um, some come out from school staff or from, uh, which then complicates that understanding. So it's not that, it's certainly not that, I think, I, I will speak for myself. My, as a board member, I want control over where money is going. More so of like, I would just like it complete, I would like it very clear of what the board is actually responsible for and what the board is not responsible for. Um, and then we can clarify with our community too. You know, what I do hear from people is like, why do I have to pay for this too?
Mm-hmm.
Well, you know what, why do I need to have to pay? Don't they have enough?
Right.
You know, why do I have to pay for this? And some of it is that you, you don't, in order for that program to run.
In most cases.
And the other issue is that-
In most cases, if it doesn't need for, for running, it is to have extras of that.
But the other complication is the Title IX legislation does talk about booster fundraising. And so all of that team fundraising would, in essence, be going to, theoretically, you have individual teams fundraising, would be going to Spencerport Booster Club, which then should be divided out with the equitability clause is, right? It's not percent equals number of students, that gets complicated, but equitably, and I, um, I will, I mean, I, I had students on sports teams, I have daughters who didn't do one fundraiser ever. Um, and had their seasons, do you know what I mean? But there are other sports teams that are fundraising a lot for their activity, which tells me that maybe it's not, that, that division under Title IX isn't happening. So that's just, we do have that regulation that involves booster money. So I just wanna make sure that we're in-
Yeah.
-compliance with that.
Rick and I have talked quite a bit about nice-to-have versus need. Um, as Gary mentioned, you know, we feel our budget supports the needs and students can participate, and so to your point, yeah, the urgency around fundraising and how we're sort of marketing these nice-to-have items and where's the balance with all the different priorities that we have. Um, you know, I think what came to light here, and, and I really wanna thank Rick, because Rick wanted to provide you answers, but this wasn't that type of presentation. We wanted to be honest with, here's where we're grappling, but even when we're asking, well, what does that policy really mean? That, that means we need to go back into the policy and, and clarify that. Um, as well as you all identified what the booster structure is in theory and maybe what it is in application in practice might be two different things right now. And so that's part of this, uh, new daughter, the review, the review. And, and, um, the questions and the pondering have really led us to a great place, I think, to, to understand it and to get better at our practices.
And I do think when we talk about, like, when we really look at like equity and inclusion and how do people be able to participate, when you start adding that fundraising piece into the picture in order to be able to participate or in what may seem as necessary, but maybe a want, that's where it starts to get complicated, because it puts, um, families in a position of having either feeling like they have to-
Right.
-or actually having to fund, you know, trips or expenses that in order to participate. And I think when we look at equity, then that starts to really play a piece of how equitable is it for a lot of people. And we know that sports already, there's an equity issue in order to participate.
Yeah.
Um, not run by the school, let me be clear. I understand that that's not a school issue, but we all know that in order to play, a lot of times it's travel teams and camps and practices, like that's already built into the structure anyway. Um, not in our school structure, but in the larger, you know, and I, I, I wanna be careful not, that we're not adding a lot-
Yeah.
-to that.
Yeah, too, like, the use of district branding with some of these organizations is very troublesome.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, because I think that to the lay community member, of course, it looks like it's a school district.
When they copy and paste all of those, stretch it vertically or horizontally, change the colors, it makes me cringe, but it's not, it's, it's confusing.
It is.
And Rick, we know, I know that we fire a lot of questions here, we certainly, those were not questions that you had.
Answers.
Answers too.
No, Kristen helped relieve some of that. Okay, good?
Yes, thank you.
It was a great thing.
Look forward to it.
We're gonna, um, move into our productive. We're in our last meeting, I can no longer see from that podium to the screen, so. Um, so our budget is really going to re-anchor, uh, the board into our budget initiatives. We are going to take board with some changes in some of our financial numbers as, as they have to do with our expenditures and our revenues. And then really, um, continue to have our conversation from our last meeting around our tax rate. Forgive me for the board members who sit on our budget focus group, I don't need to be redundant, but I do want to anchor back into our budget initiatives. Uh, what I shared with our budget focus group is that we really made a concerted effort this year to seek input and feedback from our community, what was important to them, where we needed to focus our finances. Um, and not only through the budget focus thought exchange, but as you know, we had a thought exchange for strategic planning. Uh, our safety committee ran a thought exchange, so lots of different ways to get feedback. Um, I also had the opportunity, which were very enjoyable, to meet with our secondary students and our middle school students. Um, and talking to them about how they see their school and what's important to them and, and making sure that there were all threads and entry points into our budget. So again, our four main, uh, priority areas for this budget that we really wanted to address was academic learning, the additional need around our mental health and student support services. Of course, safety and security continues to be a priority and our operational needs. What we talked about at our last meeting in the budget focus group is, is we were going through these priorities was, what are we really trying to accomplish when we say focusing on reducing class size? Um, and so we wanted to be really clear, and will continue to be clear when we go out to the community, that we've been working with principals and staff members for the last two years now, really looking at cohorts of students and identifying where it would be helpful to have smaller class sizes. So in that work, much of what we talked about this year was, have those cohorts improved? You know, do they still need to be smaller? And our budget maintains five elementary teachers, um, to address class sizes and two secondary teachers. Um, I do wanna point out to the board that those positions last year were funded through federal stimulus. This year, they, um, have made their way into the general fund. Uh, another area of focus for this budget is the increase in math intervention support. So what we've been looking at is all types of student data. Um, again, feedback from staff members needing additional support and also looking quite honestly at the enrollment numbers across our elementary schools. Um, and really looking at how also is enrollment? For example, um, there's about a hundred twenty-five or so students between our smallest elementary and our largest, Mudd and Teller. So we've gotta look, um, also at those staffing ratios and what does enrollment do, but also student learning needs. As you know, um, we are increasing pre-K classrooms, uh, by two sections. So that also means that we're looking to increase and, and be accommodating to our preschool students with specials. So music, art, um, PE. Preschool specials and, and specials in general is a tricky staffing ratio, and I give a lot of credit to Jamie. You know, we need to look at all of those sections across the district and then look at which student, which teachers, excuse me, have to float amongst um, buildings, and so, uh, we'll continue to work out with that FTE, it looks like, as, as we've got, solidified that. Between our last board meeting and today, we've also been, uh, working with Mike and Maria, Ty's done a great job, having conversations around special education needs. Um, we're focusing on some additional needs in our ICT model and some of our self-contained classes, our twelve-on-one, our six-on-one models. Really looking to make sure that we're addressing the special education needs of our students, particularly as our annual reviews are coming up and we're projecting what they need for next year. Um, so there is an increase there. As a reminder, we have added an S L teacher last year in the twenty-two, twenty-three school budget that we're accounting for. And we will continue to, um, add support from the math specialists through BOCs that's helping us, um, really address the impact of COVID, uh, for all of our students, particularly in the area of mathematics. So those are our priority areas and our areas of focus academically. I know the board understands the level of mental health uh, needs that we're seeing across all of our buildings. Uh, again, working with staff, in regards to student support services, looking critically, um, at our, at our needs. Uh, we feel that we need to add two school counselors across the elementary levels. That will make each elementary, um, building equivalent would be a number of counselors and PBS staff workers. Uh, we're also looking to add that social worker at the middle school level. Um, you know that we had conducted a pretty comprehensive study of our nursing support earlier in this year. We needed the recommendation for an LPN mid-year to address, um, student need and the addition of another outgame for next year. Safety and security, uh, obviously in light of what's happened in our region and, and in our nation, that's weighing heavy on our hearts, that continues to be, uh, an absolute priority for our school district. Um, so our budget supports, as you know, additional features of the Raptor system. Um, continuation of the four positions that we added last year with an increase in the four positions that we talked, uh, pretty specifically about with our last meeting. And then, of course, our camera replacement plan. Um, we know that utilizing technology as part of our safety and security, um, toolbox is really important. And then, of course, our operational needs. I, I think Rick has shared, um, multiple times that in the past, when cuts needed to be made or we needed to fine-tune our budget, it usually came at the cost of the operational department. We know that our buildings really require considerable repair and, and upkeep. Um, so the focus on adding that additional cleaner will really help focusing on building repairs, the purchasing of facilities, equipment, and the transfer of the capital fund. So this will allow us, um, to move a hundred thousand dollars into a regular capital outlay. Um, basically, that's doing a small-scale capital work that we don't necessarily have to put into a capital improvement plan. Um, the nice part of building that is that, um, after a few years, you also get aid on that. So we start to, um, develop, uh, not only meeting our needs, but getting aid back in return.
That's a good question.
Yes.
Wait, we can allocate money to a fund like that without necessarily having a specific repair in mind that they need it for? Or is it a send-it-as-you-go type of a situation?
Were you in the specifics about the?
Yeah, no, you, we'll, we'll be working with our architect, we have to have a specific-
Okay.
-project in mind-
Okay.
Uh, to, to, uh, we see the aid in the following year.
Okay.
Darren has been very mindful in that and, um, when we need, you know, sort of what's that long-term plan and what are the small projects that we can continue in the future, right? So our other budget initiatives that this budget is hopefully going to support. We talked, um, last meeting about the concept of looking at the community schools model. Um, I wanna be clear, I don't know if I was as clear as I could have been in our budget focus group. That initiative in our poster through BOCs is to do an analysis. Um, so Leah, you brought up a great point. Not only can we look and research what's been successful about community schools, but what can we learn, um, maybe through models that haven't been so successful? Um, I just wanted to be clear that that's more the analysis than the, the research of, um, how might we consider, um, implementing a community schools model? What do we already have in place and, and might we consider? Uh, the budget also supports, of course, upgrading our transportation routing system, our bus replacement plan. Um, a specific question to Rick in our budget focus group was like, how many are we planning for bus replacements? Uh, Rick had shared ten. Again, a reminder, because a lot of people are asking about, well, what, where are we with green buses? Um, you know, we know that there's still a lot of, uh, legislative work that needs to be done in regards to that initiative. Um, I mentioned our pre- pre-kindergarten program, building upon that, software enhancements. Um, we had a presentation from Corey about our cybersecurity and our one-to-one, the situation of our one-to-one laptop plan. So all in all, we wanted to anchor in these initiatives because we really wanted to make sure that as we communicate, not only to you as a board, but as our community, that we're helping the community recognize what you've said had, was important to us, we heard you. Uh, we've got multiple, uh, ways in which we solicited information and really anchored this in these main priority areas. And not only do we wanna be responsive to those meetings, but we wanna be responsive- And not only do we want to be responsive to those meetings, but we want to be responsible fiscally. So we think that we've put together a budget that is responsive, but also fiscally responsible. And so I want to invite Rick to come up because again, as I shared, with those initiatives and our desire to really be transparent and continuing to go back and making sure that needs are met, our expenditures have changed and Rick's going to go through that in terms of our expenditures and our revenues.
So again, when we last presented to you, our expenditure plan was at 92.2 million. Within that two-week period, it's now gone to 92.7. Overall, it's a 5.24% increase of $5,400. So where did that come from? Again, Kristen did a great job of identifying those initiatives, looking at special education needs. We added some staff in there. Again, a lot of the adjustments were in VOSIS because what happens is we initiate where service requests we think are going to be in December, they take that information from all the districts, they build a budget, they send that information back based and if there's any changes to the per-unit cost, I make those adjustments. So that's what a lot of those adjustments are. In addition to, you're seeing the math specialist. There is a reallocation. So you're seeing a decrease in computer-assisted instruction. Essentially reallocated about 202,000 into security plant. That's probably a camera replacement plan that really falls under a coaster that falls under the security, not necessarily computer-assisted instruction, as well as $300,000 in transferred capital. Any questions before I move on to the other parts of the budget? Okay. On the revenue side, again, have to have a balanced budget. March 14th, we're at 92.2. We're currently at 92.7. Then you've seen that change. So what really changed? Again, I'm gonna start from the bottom up. To offset that transfer to capital, I'm bringing in a transfer from debt service. So it's budget neutral. Okay? The rest of the funding will be required from our tax levy. So that being said, big picture, balanced budget, 92.7. I want to highlight that as of right now, we are not anticipating using any reserves or appropriated fund balance, which is a position you want to be in. Big picture, sure to be 92.7. Revenues excluding the levy is 15.1. So that the amount necessary to balance the budget is 42.5. Even though I'm showing three different scenarios, remember that we can essentially establish any levy the board chooses. This would be the highest if you did not want to have to go out with a super majority. This is just again last year's and then right now we need 42.5 million to balance the budget. So again, I just want to share with you just considerations as you process how to move forward. Our revenue increase excluding revenue and fund transfers is about 4.9. Our stated increase alone is 4.5. Remember that their foundation aid, we're not going to get big increases like we did for the upcoming 23, 24 or the current year. And that historically our levy's at 22.2%. That's more recently we've gone to the maximum allowable levy with that. Kristen shared the expenditure initiatives, just other things that obviously you're very familiar with. Current rate of inflation is about 8%. District-wide, we're not seeing a large enrollment growth. We may see some in pockets. And then you're going to see in a, in a bit, the reassessments, the town reassessments are going to play a real factor in not only this year, but most likely the following years. So right now, again, this was a chart we've used in the past, we're at 2.60%. So during the time we last met, the town of Paris had sent a report. I see this smile on my face. Thank you on that.
Thanks.
Taking a little bit more power. They sent a report on what, where they're at currently. So I just want to highlight, these are not final numbers. I will not know final numbers until July. But when they, when she sent the report, I looked at it and it was about 15%. Well, that's quite a bit different than my 3%. So I wanted to reach out to the other assessors and they were very kind to provide where they were at with me. So town of Gates, I had 0%, really thinking, okay, I know the Amazon pilot is going to really impact it. Well, I didn't realize it was impacting it as much as you can see a decrease of close to 18% estimated. Town of Ogden, I projected a 1.3 based on what they're seeing, it's 0.3. And then town of Karma, I have projected 1.8. So it's going up to 3.5, tend to. Again, I also went out, checked the website to identify if there was any change in the utilization rate. There was one at Karma. I had it 67%. So I bumped it to what's on the website. So what you're seeing then is based on these estimates, the information I have at the time, town of Ogden would see a tax rate increase of 9.43%, Gates 1.01. Town of Greece, you're going to see a decrease of over 8% and for the town of Karma, it's a 5.16%. So to help with that in context, again, just for illustrative purposes, you're seeing in the far left column, the current rates and what your tax bill would be on $2,000, $200,000 home excluding star. So you can see where the highlighted yellow 2.63, that's what we need to currently balance our budget. So for the town of Ogden, that required a $445 increase on an annual basis for $37 per month. And you can see the, the rest of the numbers. I tried to provide sort of an increase of 0.5 so that you can feel for what the differential is all the way up to the maximum allowable levy. So at this stage, really, I mean, I think we're pretty close to what would be a recommended budget. Obviously, hopefully the state budget passes on April 1st. So assuming that does, go in, take another look at the revenues, see how that impacts it. But really it's, I think, we're at a stage where we need a little guidance. Are you comfortable with what we're recommending at 2.63 or preliminarily recommending? Do you think it should be lower? Do you think it should be higher? Just like the budget focus group critics. Oh. Do you have a sense yet, thoroughly in this year, thinking this? But do you have a sense whether we're going to be transferring anything this year into reserves? Yeah, so I'll share with you. I think we're, right now, I think we're about a million dollars to be there on the revenue side, about 1.4 on the expenditure side. So we will have a lot to put into reserves. I think last time the thought was the balanced budget number.
That's where I was at.
Yeah.
You know, I assume that, you know, more than Dave and Barge and Georgia, people who do account, are those who are from Ogden.
Right. I think too, it's a little different as opposed to two weeks ago too. As one of the things that changed is before we were looking at, you know, we are about 15, whatever, 4%, let's say in Ogden, of voters, but the other three areas were originally looking at a decrease. Now only one is looking at a decrease. So now we're putting it closer to.
Right.
I'm drawing a number out there. I don't know what I've got in my head, but let's say 80% of our people of our district is going to be seeing an increase. So to go out high, I think is as it want.
Right.
Yeah, it is as it want. That, yeah, kind of modified what it was. But I, I just, again, for those that will be doing this for a while, we have to always be looking down the road and be concerned about. But if we're putting money in reserve this year, that's a good thing.
And someone brought up during the budget focus group, but the point is well made. We are thinking long-term as the voter.
The voters.
Right.
But we, we have to try and at least put that out there.
Right, yeah, yeah, for sure.
So I mean, is everybody kind of is the consensus then that don't have the amount needed to balance? You know, that's kind of where we're at and whatever that number ends up being, 2.63 or 2.7 or whatever.
Yes, I have one, I have one question, but it's, I guess I'm going to ask you in crystal wallet. So this year we're seeing a big increase in foundation aid. Obviously, we wouldn't expect to see that next year and we have no idea where foundation aid will be going.
No.
Long-term. This could have been from the governor to fund foundation aid fully until just this fiscal year.
So after, after this year, assuming everything plays out, they'll follow formula. And I, at least, I mean, that formula is all over the map. A lot of it is enrollment driven, but that was years ago, they're taking that role, so.
Because we don't have a good idea where we are under that formula.
Not right, I don't know. That's why I think last time I tried to provide some examples of looking at long-range planning. And again, you know, 1%, 2%. It's only as good as the estimates that I'm squared forward. I mean, that may be low, maybe high, I just don't know.
Yeah, it's a difficult analysis because I am envisioning your slide from the last time that showed how best to sort of manage the deficits going forward. But for this year, the balanced budget seems like the best strategy.
Just real quickly then, what's on the ballot? I just want to make you aware, obviously, the spending plan, but we are looking to go forward. The resolution for the community approval, another capital reserve for buses and motor vehicle equipment, in particular with the zero emission plan for buses and those buses are going to be in the $100 range. And then we have two open seats through board coming up. Who hasn't put in a, will pick up an application, you have until April 17th to, to submit it. And just a reminder, we did invite the budget focus group to the town board meeting. Superintendent recommends a budget and it's at six. He'll also be approving the property tax report. Okay? Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for a good conversation over the last few meetings and what I shared with the budget focus group. And I just want to remind the board that between now and the next meeting, if there are other thoughts or questions that arise, please reach out to myself or into Rick so we can be responsive to that by the next meeting. And then Rick, the financial report, if you don't have any, kind of reviewing that.
Revenue, yeah, revenue side, again, I mentioned, we're going to be about a million to the good. A lot of that is because of transportation, transportation aid in particular. I think the next item to really be on the lookout for is sales tax. Is to see what we're going to receive, how much of an increase that may or may not be compared to what we've budgeted for. So if things trend the way they typically do, we should be on the, on the plus side of that. On the expenditure side, again, I think, you know, the federal stimulus funds, as I've worked with Nicole to go through the process of different amendments, we've been able to identify and purchase things from the federal stimulus that would normally have been part of the general fund. So you're seeing the savings there. But a lot, and a lot of that has to do with personal salaries. Or the fact that we haven't been able to hire some physicians. So big picture, right now I'm projecting the savings of about 1.4 million dollars. So again, getting to Gary's point earlier, I think we'll be in a position to fund some reserves that ultimately will be helpful, I think, at least in the 25, 26 year, which was what we had projected. No matter what scenario I use, we're looking at some sort of deficit.
Okay, two questions.
Motion to see the financial report. Okay, second, all favor. Anything meeting-wise, valuation?
Sounds like Rick, yeah, awful lot of parts.
There's a Rick show.
We'll be sure to diggy that out to the construction and HR. Okay, entertain a motion to move into executive session.
I make a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing matters regarding data security and the employment history of the people who are.
Okay, second, please. Leah, all favor. Moving into executive session.